Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Jared, please take role.
Mr. Bekowski.
Here.
Mr. Bada. Mr. Embrasia.
Here.
Ms. Filiagi.
Here.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Ms. Hallam.
Here.
Mr. Klein. Mr. Macy.
Here.
Ms. Nakarati Chakas.
Here.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Here.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritsio.
Mr. Walton.
Here.
President Katina.
Here.
As of right now, we have 12 members, or yeah, 12 members present, sorry.
We'll begin with Proclamation/ certificates 13660-25.
A proclamation declaring September 2025 is National Preparedness Month in Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmembers Nakarati Chakas, Walton, and all other members of council.
Good evening, everyone. It is my absolute pleasure, as Chair of Public Safety, to be able to present this proclamation this evening to my friend, Steve Imberlina, sitting, standing next to me. So this is an important month of recognition, and I hope that you'll share a few words after I give the proclamation, but September is National Preparedness Month, and as all of you may have been tuning in, we have a special committee that is being led by Chair Walton to really address the aftermath of the storms that had happened this past year. In addition to that, subsequent to that, probably only about three weeks or so following that, we had another significant event with flooding across many areas of the region. And so there have been many times that our department at the Allegheny County Emergency Services has been stepping up and stepping out into your communities. You see them in many different spaces, and they are at the call of duty and service as soon as we have events such as those extreme weather events that have impacted so many lives across this region. So they do everything that they can in a proactive way, as we've been hearing through our committee, to be helping individuals across the county to really understand what they can be doing as well, so that we can be prepared for these events. And you can talk a little bit about that.
Sure.
Okay, so with that said, I'll read the proclamation, and then I'll have you step back.
Very good.
Great. So whereas National Preparedness Month, observed each September, serves as a crucial reminder of the importance of being prepared and provides an opportunity for all residents to take steps to improve their personal and community readiness. And whereas, the 2025 theme for National Preparedness Month, Take Control in One, Two, Three, emphasizes simple actionable steps individuals can take to protect themselves and their loved ones before disaster strikes. And whereas, the Allegheny County Emergency Services Department and American Red Cross, along with other local, state, and federal partners, provide life-saving services, offer public education, outreach, and training to empower and equip residents with the tools and the knowledge needed for effective preparedness and response. And whereas, we commend the commitment of citizens, community organizations, first responders, and emergency management professionals who work tirelessly to build safer, more resilient communities, and work together to ensure that families, neighborhoods, businesses, and the entire community are ready for any emergency. And whereas, it is essential that all residents of Allegheny County take time during National Preparedness Month to assess their risks, create emergency plans, build supply kits, and stay informed about potential hazards. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Allegheny County Councilmembers Michelle Nakarati Chakas, DeWitt Walton, and all members of council do hereby recognize September 2025 as National Preparedness Month in Allegheny County, and commends the Allegheny County Emergency Services Department, American Red Cross, and all first responders, organizations, and community leaders who work to keep our residents safe, informed, and resilient in the face of emergencies. And witness whereof, we have hereunto caused the seal of the Allegheny County to be affixed this 24th day of September 2025. Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I appreciate the proclamation. Thank you. I share this with the department. I share this with, you know, every, every member, that 911 operator who's working at 3:30 in the morning, taking phone calls or answering the radio. We work with our 130 local municipalities, their local emergency management coordinators, all the police chiefs, fire chiefs, and EMS chiefs who deliver service. There's, there's, there's some interesting things. As you read the proclamation, there were some words in there, and there's some words that I wrote on, on my sheet of paper as well, resiliency. That, that's what we're after, resiliency. The, the loose definition could be the ability to, to bounce back from, from a difficult event. One of the things Chief Brown always says is plan, prepare, and prevent. And that includes every member of every community, every family, every business, every organization. You know, a lot of times, especially with weather events, and we've had a lot of them this year, going back to January, we had about a 10-day period where the high temperature was 10 degrees. Follow that with the April-through-June timeframe, where we had thunderstorms and flooding and a wind event that took power away for, you know, two-thirds of the county for, for an extended period of time. Follow that up with the heat of the summer, which then turned into the dry spell that, that is finally breaking now. We kind of see it all, and a lot of times we have advanced warning that, that these things are going to happen, and just simple steps that people can do. You know, have three days' worth of water, have three days' worth of food. You know, check on neighbors, things like that. These are things that, that can make you as an individual more resilient, and, and certainly helps us as, as a government agency coming in. If, if we can, if we can rely on that community being somewhat self-sufficient, then we can make sure that, that our services are able to go around, because as we learned in April, you know, when we have that huge number, we get spread thin. So again, that's, that's what September and National Preparedness Month is all about. I think I heard a long time ago, the reason September was picked is because that is the peak of the hurricane season, although we're an inland community. If we think back to Ivan, we, we can be affected by, by some of those things, but essentially September is that, that peak of the hurricane season, when, when preparedness really comes out. So I appreciate this, and again, I share this with all of you and, and everyone in this room, for that matter.
Thank you. So, please. I didn't properly give everyone your title, so Mr. Imberlina is Assistant Chief of the Allegheny County Emergency Services, and if you would please take back our recognition and our thanks and acknowledgement to the entire team, we really appreciate your support and everything that you all do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I, can I ask you a question? I have two proclamations here. Is there someone else who would should be receiving this as well? Not, they're not here, okay. So here, I will give this to you to take back to, with my one hand, to take back to your team, and this is the other one for those individuals, and then here are your notes. Are we doing pictures now? President Katina?
Chair Walton, would you like to come down here? Red Cross up there.
Well, you know, I can't, that's, that's, that's a good, yeah.
All bodies are on you.
I got a face for radio.
Everybody ready? Okay, ready, one, two, three. Gotcha.
Congratulations.
Did my boss by channeling your face?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
My stomach.
Before proceeding, please let the record reflect that Mr. Klein is now present via telephone, and Ms. Pritsio is now present with us. 13661-25, a proclamation recognizing the week of September 29th to October 5th, 2025, as the Week Without Driving in Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmembers Grisbeck and Hallam. All right, so today we are recognizing the Week Without Driving. I think it's especially pertinent time to be recognizing this proclamation, given what we're currently going through in Harrisburg with the funding crisis at the state level. Right now, PRT stands to have roughly 35% reduction in their service cuts. Thankfully, we had a stopgap measure for this year, but that only remedies things for this year, right? We're probably going to be looking at the same exact fight next year, and as you'll hear as I read through this proclamation, it's really important that we have access to public transportation throughout Allegheny County, because there are so many people throughout the county that, whether it be through socioeconomic status, whether it be through disability, deeply rely on access to public transit or other means of transportation to get around, to get to their jobs, to get to their doctor's appointments, to just live their lives. Whereas, Week Without Driving is a nationwide movement started by Disability Rights Washington in 2021 to challenge leaders to better understand barriers non-drivers face in accessing their communities across the United States, and whereas, this year, the second local Week Without Driving Pittsburgh Initiative is being co-hosted by Pittsburghers for Public Transit, Access MOB Pittsburgh, Bike Pittsburgh, and Age Friendly Greater Pittsburgh, with at least 30 organizational cosponsors, and whereas, Allegheny County is committed to providing safe, accessible streets and transportation systems for all residents. And Week Without Driving is a great way to understand how we can improve our transportation connectivity and access to better meet the needs of our community members, and whereas, in 2024, over 120,000 daily trips were taken using Pittsburgh regional transit to get to work, school, leisure activities, and more, with 38% of total PRT riders being people of color, and 28% of riders being black, which is more than double the percentage of black residents in Allegheny County. And whereas, devastating cuts to transit service have been proposed in Allegheny County due to lack of dedicated transit funding in Pennsylvania, with proposed 35% of bus and T service reduced, and 9% fixed route fare increase, 62% of paratransit service reduced with a 20% fare increase, 30% of service cut in downtown Pittsburgh, and at least 19 municipalities and three city of Pittsburgh neighborhoods losing their service entirely. And whereas, the cost of owning a car continues to rise, and many people cannot afford the cost of a car, with the AAA estimating it costs $12,297 a year to own a vehicle, and drivers needing to make at least $120,000 a year to coverage average car costs, while median income is only $77,000 per household. Nearly a third of the people residing in the United States do not have a driver's license by choice, or because their age or a condition that does not allow them to drive, and whereas, in addition to increasing barriers to transportation for individuals, reliance on cars continue, contributes to transportation being the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in the United States, and results in the creation of tire dust that can be detrimental to watersheds, and whereas, reliance on cars has also resulted in the increase of freeway expansions, which has been detrimental to neighborhoods in Allegheny County, particularly those that have historically been home to communities of color. And whereas, Allegheny County has recognized mobility access as necessary for a healthy and safe community, providing access to education and employment opportunities, medical services, shopping, recreation, and the ability to reach friends and family, and whereas, the Week Without Driving Initiative aims to draw attention to the difficulties faced every day by non-drivers in our community, and to inspire decision-makers to address those barriers and the gaps in our transportation system. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Allegheny County Councilmembers Dan Grisbeck and Bethany Hallam, do hereby recognize the week of Monday, September 29th, 2025, through Sunday, October 5th, 2025, as the Week Without Driving in Allegheny County, and residents are encouraged to use public transit, walk, ride a bike, or use ride-sharing options to include carpooling in their everyday transportation needs. Thank you.
You basically said what we would have said, so that's all good. But we would encourage all of our county council members to join our press conference next Tuesday, which will be sort of the kickoff to the Week Without Driving. It's going to be next Tuesday, 9:00 a.m., in front of the City-City Building, and then we'll be doing a city proclamation as well with the city of Pittsburgh, so would love to see you all there. Thanks.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
The remaining proclamations will be read into the record. 13662-25.
A proclamation recognizing the 10th Annual Joey Fabus Superhero 5K Run One Mile Walk to Honor the Legacy of Joey Fabus, sponsored by Councilmember Grisbeck.
13663-25.
A proclamation recognizing September 2025 as National Recovery Month in Allegheny County, and organizations such as Unity Recovery for its leadership in providing inclusive, peer-based recovery support services, sponsored by Councilmember Macy.
13664-25.
A proclamation recognizing and commending the Pittsburgh Recovery Walk for its essential work in uplifting recovery journeys, fostering compassion and strengthening community bonds, sponsored by Councilmember Hallam.
13665-25.
A proclamation recognizing the North Side Christian Health Center for its over 30 years of service to our region, sponsored by Councilmember Bada.
And will not have public comment on general items.
First up is John Kestowitz.
Let's review. The ballot that our Allegheny Counties, County voters voted on regarding the jail referendum had no language regarding the use of leg shackles on hospital runs. The language on the ballot concerned, and I quote, "conditions in the Allegheny County Jail, not conditions in a hospital emergency room." If this is all that voters saw regarding the referendum, they had no idea what they were voting for. Regarding the petition statement, 98% of the statement concerned solitary confinement. Voters who signed the petition were thinking they were voting against solitary confinement. Much of the media attention regarding the referendum had to do with the restraint share, which has no bearing on this case. Based upon our experience of obtaining 1,081 signatures regarding our petition, not one person informed us that they were aware of the fact that by voting for the referendum, they were voting against the use of leg shackles on hospital runs. How could they be? It has been more than two years since the referendum was put into effect. County Council now has the authority to change parts of the referendum by using the agenda initiative identified in the home, county Home Rule Charter. County Council has been providing statistics, statements from experts in the field, narratives from correctional officers, individual scenarios where officers have had to tackle escaping individuals in the emergency rooms, Zoom meetings with our officers, and published statements, statements from the TRIB, all identifying the dangerous risks of officers not having use of leg shackles in emergency rooms. At different times, I have presented to you research findings, personal statements from officers, and statements I have obtained from medical experts regarding how the risk of physically intervening in situations of violence or potential violence over time partially explains why our officers' life expectancy is so morbidly low at 61 years of age. The thought and the action of speed, of needing to physically intervene in situations of violence or potential violence has serious medical and mental health consequence, consequences for our officers over time. By your, your vote for our initiative, you literally will be giving our officers days, weeks, months, and years of more life that they can enjoy with their families, being in a healthier state of mind and body. We will be asking for a meeting with our county executive. She is aware of the other side's position on the issue, and it is only right in following her mantra of "all in Allegheny" that she meet with us, and hear our side of this, so significant of an issue. Lastly, you know some of our officers are working 70 to 80 hours in...
Go ahead.
Can I finish that?
You can finish the state.
Okay. 70 to 80 hours in five days, and we are asking our officers, our young recruits, to make a critical decision on whether to use their firearm they are carrying, being exhausted, and being without the one tool that could make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up is Brian Engler.
Good evening, council. I'm president of the union at the jail representing the officers. I'm here tonight to speak on this agenda item. I hate following a script, but I have a script. The referendum on solitary confinement did have a significant and unintended consequence, a sharp rise in escape attempts from Allegheny County Jail inmates during hospital details. You know, I thought about this. If my dad were alive today, he would say, convince me on one or two sentences why this is important. In the last 10 years, across 62 county jails, there have been 15 escape attempts total as the highest amount in any one year given. We had 14 in 18 months. We had one less than the entire state had in the last 10 years. This creates a serious public safety risk for our communities, hospital staff, other inmates, and correctional officers. We are currently the only correction staff in Pennsylvania, 62 county jails not permitted to use leg restraints on hospital details while among the public. The debate around this at times has become unproductive, with some of our opponents raising unfounded arguments. First, they claim that leg restraints are a tool of torture. Every other agency, including the sheriff, uses leg shackles. There are no accusations of torture among the thousands of uses per year. When challenged to provide evidence of a single lawsuit against Allegheny County Jail or Allegheny County regarding improper use of leg shackles by correctional officers on hospital details, no one could produce one. The argument then shifted to the use of leg shackles violates the will of the voters. However, the ballot question was specifically about improving conditions of confinement, with no mention of prohibiting leg restraints during hospital details. Again, the unintended impact of this political issue created a dangerous public safety issue, safety issue, which now you are tasked with result, with resolving. And then the argument shifted to, well, maybe we should give this work to the sheriff's office. This not only increases costs significantly, 84% more for a senior sheriff to perform the same work a junior correction officer is performing, but would require a negotiation process with multiple unions. The sheriffs would also need to increase their staffing and staff inside the jail 24/7, given the number of emergency hospital details. This solution also fails to address the core problem the abolitionist law center has, as the sheriff's office uses restraints in all situations except for pregnant females. Our solution is more discerning based on an assessment from medical providers at the jail. When you guys vote on this, you can correct the unintended consequences and enhance safety for everyone. I urge you to treat this as the critical public safety matter it is, not a political one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Will now move on to the approval of minutes. 13666-25.
A motion to approve the minutes of the August 26, 2025 regular meeting of council.
So moved. Is there a second? Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Unfinished business. Committee of Appointment Review for the second reading. 13614-25.
Approving the appointment of Angel Ivy to the Board of Property Assessment Appeals and Review for a term to expire on September 8th, 2026, sponsored by Councilmember Walton.
Councilmember Embrasia.
Thank you, President Katina. On Tuesday, September 16th, the Committee on Appointment Review convened and is proud to put forth the appointment of Ms. Ivy to the Board of Property Assessment Appeals and Review, also known as BPAR, and we are seeking a motion to approve.
Thank you. Does anyone object to a voice vote on this? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I apologize, Mr. President. We need to...
There's not a second. So, motion has been made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. So the remaining nominations are for the appointment to the Government Review Commission for the full year during which it will exist. If there are no objections, I'd like the clerk to read all of the nominations at this time, and then have a single motion to approve all five. Because that vote may not be unanimous, we will be doing a roll call vote on that motion. In the alternative, we would need to do roll call votes on each of the nominations individually. So I'm going to ask the question, is everyone okay with Councilman Embrasia making one motion? Hearing no objections. Councilman Embrasia, would you make that motion, please?
Thank you, President Katina. I am seeking a motion to approve same Committee of Appointment Review meeting on Tuesday, the 16th, to appoint Mr. Forster, Frazier, Mr. Witherall, Vecchio, and Ms. Gretchen Moore to the Allegheny County Government Review Commission, seeking a motion to approve all five.
Make a motion to approve. For the record, Jared, would you please read them?
As already noted, these are all to the Allegheny County Government Review Commission. 13607-25 is Mark Forster, sponsored by Councilmember Katina. 13611-25 is Evan Frazier, sponsored by Councilmember Nakarati Chakas. 13637-25 is Michael Witherall, sponsored by Councilmember Katina. 13639-25 is Rob Vecchio, sponsored by Councilmember Filiagi. And 13642-25 is Gretchen E. Moore, also sponsored by Councilmember Filiagi.
Thank you. The motion has been made in second. Would you please take a roll call vote, please, Jared?
On the motion to approve all five, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bada. Mr. Embrasia.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
No.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati Chakas.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 13, nose 1. Bill passes.
Committee on Parks for the second reading. 13634-25.
An ordinance to the County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania authorizing South Park Boxing Incorporated to continue to use real property on 100 acres drive in the county's South Park to conduct organized boxing and fitness training activities, sponsored by the chief executive.
Vice President Paul Mary.
Thank you, thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. We met last week concerning this issue, and it was referred back to us as, was an affirmative recommendation, and I move for approval.
So moved. Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those, all that will do a roll call vote on this, please, Jared?
On the motion to approve, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bada. Mr. Embrasia.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati Chakas.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 14, nose 0. The bill passes.
13654-25.
An ordinance to the County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania authorizing South Park Boxing Incorporated to continue to use real property on 100 acres drive in the county's South Park to conduct organized boxing and fitness training activities, sponsored by the chief executive.
Vice President Paul Mary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, last week, we, this also was, excuse me, we moved to the full council affirmative recommendation, and I move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jared, please take a roll call vote.
On the motion to approve, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bada. Mr. Embrasia.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati Chakas.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 14, nose 0. The bill passes.
Thank you. And we'll have liaison reports. Councilmember Filiagi.
Thank you. Thank you, President Katina, and I would, in this National Preparedness, Preparedness Month, right, for the month of September, I would like to thank you, President Katina, and Councilmember DeWitt Walton, on convening the Emergency Preparedness Committee meeting that we were, many of us were in attendance on September 19th, which was Wednesday. I feel that the constituents here, as well as our constituents at home, should know that it was efficient. I think it addressed existing actual issues and produced some actual results. Furthermore, it also included officials from various state, community, and municipal officials who were able to give information to, from our constituents, to the Duquesne Light, which was the, on the panel, and we elected officials were also able... training activities, sponsored by the chief executive.
Vice President Paul Mary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, last week, this also was, excuse me, moved to the full council affirmative recommendation, I move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those, we'll do a roll call vote on this, please, Jared.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bada. Mr. Embrazia.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatulis.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati Chavkas.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Cantina.
Yes.
Eyes 14, knows zero, the bill passes.
Thank you. And we'll have liaison reports. Councilmember Filiagi.
Thank you. Thank you, President Cantina, and I would, in this national preparedness month, right, for the month of September, I would like to thank you, President Cantina, and Councilman DeWitt Walton, on convening the Emergency Preparedness Committee meeting that we were, many of us were in attendance on September 19, which was Wednesday. I feel that the constituents here, as well as our constituents at home, should know that it was efficient. I think it addressed existing actual issues and produced some actual results. Furthermore, it also included officials from various state, community, and municipal officials who were able to give information to, from our constituents, to the Duquesne Light, which was on the panel. And we elected officials were also able to receive information about a plan from Duquesne Light and other sources and take that back to our residents. So I applaud the council for taking the lead on this preparedness. And I wish, I would also say, this is in stark contrast to what the executive did this week by some convening a roundtable in this very room to address issues that are not yet real and in place, and included absolutely no elected officials, and we were not able, included no county officials, and it didn't, we were not able to listen to the concerns of the groups, the provider groups, and we cannot take any of that information back to our constituents. So I'm glad that the county council is doing their part to keep our constituents informed. I thank you very much for the opportunity to give this liaison report.
Thank you. Go ahead, Chairman.
Thank you, President Cantina. Thank you, Member Filiagi, for your kind regards, kind comments regarding the work of the Special Committee on Emergency Preparedness. We had, on September 19, the presentation by Duquesne Light, and a month earlier, we had a overview by the emergency management operation of the county. And I think, what date did we set, Ken? October 8 or October 8, we're going to have reports from a variety of municipalities, a number of municipalities from, that were hard hit in that April 29 storm. And we're asking specific members to work with us to facilitate that process. As a result of that report, we're going, that meeting, we're going to then begin to finalize the report to council, and for the outcome to the executive prior to her final budget process. We think that there have been some candid kinds of conversations, and we are cognizant that significant improvements need to be made. We think that, to this point, it's a beginning and not an end, and we have some work to do, and we are trying to strive to work in a collaborative fashion to improve both the quality and the quantity of lives of residents of Allegheny County, and mitigate any damage that is, that will occur, because these storms are not going to end. They are going to continue, and we have to address those challenges as we move forward. And it's going to cost some money, and I think there's, that burden should not lie primarily on the county, but we need, we need those industries to be involved with sharing some of those responsibilities for mitigating some of the future damage. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Go ahead. Go ahead, House member.
Thank you, President Cantina. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge Warden Wingard for his tour that was extended to members of council on September 16. We had an opportunity to tour the jail and spend time with he and his staff, and we all, I think, gained great insights into the operations of the jail. He did express an invitation for any members of council who would like to, who weren't able to visit that day, to follow up and have a tour with him, and that door is always open, an invitation, and I wanted to make sure that other members of council knew that, and wanted to just thank him for the time that he was able to provide us that day.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing, no one else, we move on to new business, ordinances and resolutions, 13667-25.
An ordinance to the county of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania authorizing the county's acceptance of the donation of a chlorine training housing from Westlake Corporation and a decontamination trailer from the Department of Veterans Affairs, sponsored by the chief executive.
That will go to the Committee on Public Safety, 13668-25.
An ordinance authorizing the Department of Public Works to take certain actions on behalf of county council with respect to the issuance of temporary occupancy permits, highway occupancy permits, the grant of certain licenses, rights of entry and easements, and the amicable acquisition of certain real estate affecting county public works projects and other matters for calendar years 2026 and 2027, sponsored by the chief executive.
That will go to the Committee on Public Works, 13669-25.
An ordinance amending Section 205 of the Allegheny County Code on the Use of Solitary Confinement in Allegheny County Jail to allow for the use of leg shackles on hospital runs, sponsored by citizens of Allegheny County.
That will go to the Committee on Public Safety, 13670-25.
A resolution ratifying certain year-end transfers pursuant to Section 805.03 of the Administrative Code, sponsored by the chief executive.
That will go to the Committee on Budget and Finance, 13671-25.
A resolution to the county of Allegheny amending the grants and special accounts budget for 2025, submission 01-25, sponsored by the chief executive.
That will go to the Committee on Budget and Finance. Notification of Contracts, 13672-25.
A communication summarizing approved executive actions for the month of August 2025.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to receive and file, please.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. One other public comment on general items.
We have several, the first of whom is Cameron Justice.
Not here.
Next up would be Ed Renn.
Not here.
Next up would be Jacob Poole.
He's here.
Unknown participant is now exiting. Good evening. I'm Jacob Poole, present name Jacob Poole, previous name Zoltan Joltjakob. I am here to comment on the various employment resources the county has, such as Career Link, the Earn Program through Partner for Work and all those things. And because I'm in the Pittsburgh area, and I've been here for a long time, since essentially American organizations using military force gathered up children in Eastern Europe, put us into large camps, held us there for years, changed our names, and then brought us to America, to the Pittsburgh area, I'm here, with changed names, altered records, alone as a child, using like force, pretty much like how Russia took, you know, 20,000 kids from Ukraine in the last couple of years, the same process I went through, except America did that, and this was during the Soviet Union collapse. A lot of us were gathered from Ukraine and Yugoslavia, a lot of children, and changed our names, and people just grabbed kids and brought us to America. So I'm in the Pittsburgh area. I have no family, no friends. I'm trying to get a job. I can't. I've been working with Career Link, Pittsburgh Earn Program, like every resource I've used. And instead of those people getting me a job, everybody instead just had fun trying to manufacture false information around me for human trafficking. So it is essentially, instead of helping, people trying to hurt. So you can look at me as an example of how the thousands of other people who are in the Pittsburgh area are brought here by force like I was in the 90s, used from children's camps, in a very Nazi way, and we live here in a very Nazi way. I'm surrounded by false records, false documents, no friends, no family, no real name, and I've been working with Career Link, every resource the county has to get a job, and those people, instead of helping me get a job, they actually manufactured false information around me, which I have proof of, and I submitted to various organizations, and they tried to force me into human trafficking jobs, because I'm not supposed to make a resume and apply for jobs as a regular person. Pittsburgh area has 50 Eastern European churches at each place, even there are a lot of nice priests and nice people at each place, human traffickers, the human trafficking companies wait there for us. And we're sent there in secret, and we exist in secret. And we're, we live in this massive oppressive system of false information, unable to speak, and being, trying to forced into human trafficking jobs in the Pittsburgh area. Every single week, I'm approached by a human trafficker trying to pull me to a human trafficking place in Pittsburgh, where there's hundreds of human trafficking organizations, and we're supposed to work in secret, as not real people, as hidden persons, and amongst 100,000 people who are here from Eastern Europe and from Europe in the Pittsburgh metro area, and no one says a peek, no one squeaks, there's no words coming out of us. I'm the only person that talks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up would be Nicholas Bartel.
My name is Nicholas Bartel. I'm the Clean Air Campaign Manager with Penn Future, an environmental nonprofit focusing on protecting our air, water, and climate here, not only in Allegheny County, but across the Commonwealth. I want to take a moment and tell you a brief story. Last week, our office fridge was unplugged. When I opened it, the smell of spoiled rice hit me, and let me tell you, that was terrible. Once you plugged it back in, the fridge was fine, but while it was unplugged, everything spoiled. When you unplug a system that is meant to keep everything fresh, everything spoils. That's exactly what we're seeing happen when we underfund our air permit process. When the permits sit for months, even years, without action, things go bad. The difference is, spoiled fried rice just smells bad, you can throw it out. However, with an underfunded air permit program, outdated permits mean outdated limits, and unpredictable backlog can drive businesses away, and delayed enforcement makes people sick. This is not just abstract. It means kids with asthma missing school, and parents having call-off work. It means seniors with respiratory issues. It means folks are being hurt who just can't throw away the problem, just like spoiled food. The controller's audit just this past month showed us, at the end of last year, six Title V permits were still waiting a decision from the Health Department, and had been sitting for over 18 months. To put that in perspective, 18 months ago, the Chiefs were coming off winning the Super Bowl against the 49ers, and since then, another season has come and gone, and we're now in a new season, and the Chiefs have been back yet again to another Super Bowl. Meanwhile, according to the report, half of those permits are still waiting on a decision. Our air permit situation is very much so like that fridge when it was first unplugged. At first, the food was fine, but little by little, it worsened and worsened until we are in a situation where we are facing significant deficits. Even though the fees were updated in 2022, for every $7 that were allocated, inflation since then has eaten one of them, and yet, their workload still didn't shrink. The backlog and budget deficit proves the system is running on empty. The audit makes it clear that this is not sustainable right now. That's why I'm grateful to President Cantina's commitment that this council will take up the fee resolution in November, and Councilman Klein's reminder that only a fully funded program can do the job. Falling through means polluters, not taxpayers, will pay the cost of oversight. It means we don't let things spoil in the dark. So tonight, I want to thank you for that commitment and remind you that the audit is showing that the fridge is already smelling. November is your chance to plug it back in and restore trust. Thank you.
Next up is Julia Cant.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Julie Cant. I live in District 2, and I am a member of PIN, the Pennsylvania Interfaith Impact Network. Over the last 10 months, you've heard many people testify to the vital importance of a well-funded Allegheny County Health Department, ACHD, the agency whose mission it is to protect, promote, and preserve the health and the well-being of all Allegheny County residents. In September 2024, the Allegheny County Board of Health recommended an increase in the operating permit fees for polluting industries. Higher fees were necessary to fully fund the ACHD in order to enforce air quality standards. A proposal came before county council last December, but no action was taken. Before I continue, I would like to thank President Cantina for speaking directly to our members at the last council meeting. He assured us that there's going to be some movement very shortly, and he thinks that we will be happy as soon as the council gets to a certain point. For the first time in nearly a year, in which it appeared to us that council was blind to our presence and deaf to our testimony, it was gratifying to learn that council members are working seriously on this issue of air quality permit fee increases. For me, new to the process of how local government works, this direct communication opens the doors for mutual trust and respect. And yes, I agree with President Cantina that we have been very patient in light of the fact that the bill was introduced last year and that we're already in the third quarter of this year. And now, it's time to act. The workers of Allegheny County, including those at the Coke Works, deserve a fully funded and fully staffed Health Department. Residents in the Mon Valley, in particular children, and others struggling with asthma and other serious health issues caused by the decades of poor air quality, they too deserve a fully funded and fully staffed Health Department. Given the disastrous gutting of environmental protections at the federal level, we all need and deserve a fully funded and fully staffed Health Department. We want to thank everyone on council who has been working hard to make sure the ACHD is fully funded and fully staffed, and we urge them to put renewed energy into bringing the bill to the finish line. Now is the time to act. Grateful for county council's recent transparency on this matter, we request your continued patience with us and the folks who care so deeply about their community that they continue to appear before you on this issue. Thank you for your time, and we'll see you at the next county council meeting.
Thank you. Next?
Last up is Janine Rolland.
Not here. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, everyone.